Good evening. Is Father Juan Osorno here? And you're with Saint Mary Catholic Church?
Yes.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Right there. You can go right ahead and get started. Yep, you can, as long as we can hear you on the mic, you can stand however you wish.
Okay.
You can pull it.
Find my way. Okay. We put ourselves into the presence of God, giving text for a joyful moment to put God first in everything that we have to do. You listen, can you hear me? Good. Okay. Lord, we believe in you. Increase our faith. We trust everything in you. Strengthen my trust. We love you. Let me love you more and more. And we're sorry for our faults. We worship you as our first beginning. I long for you as my last end. I praise you as my constant helper and call on you as my loving protector. Guide me by your wisdom. Correct me by your justice. Comfort me with your mercy. Protect me with your power. We offer you, Lord, our thoughts, trust, our thoughts, to be fixed on you. Our words, to have you for everything. Our actions, to, that will reflect your love for us. Our sufferings, to endure for the greater glory. We want to do what you ask of us, in the way you ask, for as long as you ask, and because you ask it. Lord, enlighten our understanding, strengthen our will, purify our hearts, and make us holy. Help us always to resist temptation in the future. Help us to rise above my human, or our human weaknesses, and to grow stronger as Christians. Let us love our neighbor. Not seek only my own good, but the good of all. Help us and guide us in everything we do, everything we do, for the good of all and for your greater glory. We pray this through our God. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. All right, if they'll just stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is one nation under God, in his disposal, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to allow Commissioner Rita Pritchett to attend this meeting telephonically.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tobias. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Can you hear us okay, Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, I didn't know it was that loud.
No, you are just fine. I know there's a little bit of a delay, so we'll keep that in mind as we move forward. And please feel free to pipe in if you need to be heard.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item D, minutes for approval. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tobias. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Madam Chair, if I may, request the removal of H4, which is the plat modification and waiver for Rambling Acres West Edition. This is a request from the applicant. They're going to have a meeting with the homeowners association, and so we'll be bringing that back to you after they have that meeting. And then also, if I may respectfully request the removal of item H1, which is the Health First PUD item, and we'll be bringing that back to you all on July 19th, next Tuesday.
Okay, as a matter of correction, that was F4, correct? I think you said H.
I'm sorry, F4. Yes, ma'am, the consent item, and then H1 for the Health First.
So F4 and H1?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Will we move to the next meeting?
Yep.
All right. I had a couple of cards for these, so if you were here for items F4 or item H1, this has been moved to the next meeting.
Yes.
All right. Does anybody have anything they want removed from consent?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Tobias.
Thank you. I've got a couple motions here. First of all, I'd like to make a motion to table items J1, J2, and J3 to July 19th meeting, or whenever the next regular meeting is where District One Commissioner can be physically present. That again is J1, J2, and J3.
Okay, I have a motion to table items J1, J2, and J3. You said to the next meeting?
Till the 19th, or when District One Commissioner can be physically present.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Tobias, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Madam Chair.
Yes, so anybody here on item J1, J2, or J3, that item's been moved to the next regular meeting on July 19th, or when Commissioner Pritchett's able to attend in person. Yes, Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to pull F25 from consent.
Item F25? All right. Does anybody want anything else pulled? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve consent minus items F4 and F25 for discussion.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Tobias, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, I have a card on 25, too, as well. I'm not sure if you want to hear the card first, or if you'd like to speak.
It's your discretion, Madam Chair.
You pulled the item.
Okay. I would, I do have some questions. This is for nominations, so if you have a card for Ms. Marcy Murphy, would that be the card?
That's the card, yes.
If, with your approval, go ahead and listen to the concerns.
Okay.
Thanks.
Marcy, hand up.
Commissioner Tobias, I just wanted to say that a couple years ago, you had voiced your concern about putting minorities on our board, and our board has taken that into consideration and has been intentional when they've replaced with all of our vacancies. So in the last couple of years, we've only had one vacancy, and we filled it with an African-American woman in the healthcare industry. We recently just had another vacancy, and the mandated position is for a community-based organization that helps youth find education and employment. And that person is going to go before our board and then before you guys on August 30th, and she's a female Hispanic. So we've done our best on the intentional vacancies. If you have any questions about the reappointments, if you look at the reappointment sheet, there are eight people on that sheet. Five of them are mandated, so there's nine positions that are mandated, federally mandated by the government, that we have to fill. You know, it doesn't matter who's in that position, that's the position that we have to fill. So if you look at the reappointments, there are three on here that are businesses. And I didn't know if you had any questions about those, or if you had anything to add.
Commissioner Tobias?
First of all, thank you. Thank you for trying to amend something that was problematic under many concerns. As you know, your board was not reflective of, A, the population of Brevard County, nor was it reflective of the people that you serve. And I think that's a disappointment. It's terrible that this board had to, like, the fire under your rear end to do it. But I still don't think we're there. And, so I do have a couple of questions here. I'd like to know what you've done to help fix this, because I've made a few phone calls, and I don't know, my results may be different than yours. So I've got some boards out here, because it was mentioned that you got in contact with Chambers of Commerce, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Did you reach out to the African-American Chamber of Commerce of Central Florida?
No, no.
Okay. Did you reach out to the Brevard Hispanic Center?
Not for those two vacancies.
Did you reach out to the Brevard Caribbean American and Cultural Association?
No, I didn't.
Okay. How about the Space Coast Black Chamber of Commerce?
Nope.
How about the Native Heritage Gathering Incorporated?
No.
Okay, and we're going to end here with the Puerto Rican Hispanic Chamber of Commerce.
I made some inquiries into that one.
Okay, so the last two years, you've contacted, and one organization, one organization that, that...
Whoops.
We've had two vacancies, and we've filled them with minority positions.
So these are reappointments, correct?
No, those are two new...
No, no, I'm sorry, the ones that are today.
On here? Yes, they are reappointments. Now, what we didn't do, and if you want us to do this, this is fine, is we didn't deny reappointments, because every year, a third of our board comes before you guys for reappointments. So we didn't deny any reappointments in order to fill them with minority slots. We did not do that. Now, if you want us to do that, we can...
Is your board reflective today? I'm looking at seven or eight right here, and all seven or eight are white individuals, are they not?
They are.
I mean, not 80% of them, not 90% of them, but 100%, is that correct?
For these eight, yes. Five of them...
The ones we're dealing with today, correct?
Yes.
So tell me how much more reflective your body is today than it was two years ago? How many were on two years ago versus today? How many people of color were on your board?
So when you look at the 24 members, nine of them are federally mandated, so it doesn't matter, you know, who they are.
I understand, and there are 13, right, business members, correct?
There actually, there's 13 business members, but there are a couple that we can also work with, that community-based organizations that we can also help fill, that are mandated. But those aren't as set in stone as the others. So about 15. So we have two African-Americans, which represents about 10% of those 15 members. We don't have any Hispanic. We're getting ready to add one, if you guys approve that, on August 30th. And we're working towards filling the vacancies. Now, for the reappointments, we, you know, every year, a third of the board comes up for reappointment.
I'm sorry, so two of 15, is that now, or is that two?
Now.
And how, how was it?
And we have one Indian on our board also, of the business.
Okay, that's a mandated one, is that not?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm confused here. You're trying to confuse, you're trying to co-mingle these two groups. Some are mandated. You just said, "We have no choice over..."
Right.
But you're trying to take credit for the ones that you have no choice. I'm concerned with the ones you do have a choice, and it seems like your choice is non-white people. Or, sorry, only white people to avoid. Wait, I'm confused. So let's go back to, of the non-mandated ones, two years ago, when I said, "Your board looks like it fell off the Mayflower", I think.
Yes, you do.
Help me. How many African, let's go, how many people of color did you have, two years ago?
Two.
Okay. How many do you have today?
Two.
Okay. Let's go with Hispanic folks. How many folks of Hispanic descent did you have two years ago?
We, I think we had one.
And how many do you have today?
We don't have any today. That's what we're getting ready to...
So you've regressed, and you're taking credit for trying to get back to where you were, and you had an opportunity by bringing seven or eight people up here. And yeah, it's nice to reappoint people and all that stuff, but you didn't even reach out to, you said the chambers, you might as well just said the white chambers here. This is absolutely disgusting.
The vacancies, every vacancy we had, we replaced with a minority. The reappointments, on year five...
You don't have to reappoint, that's our job. I asked you, I challenged you, and you didn't take up the challenge, granted, but we've seen a regression in the last two years. You haven't progressed, you've regressed. You've gone from, what, three down to two?
Are you talking about African-Americans or minorities?
Well, how are we going to, you know, we can, we can...
We have three minorities of the businesses. We have three of them. We're getting ready to add another minority.
Now, I'm looking, but I'm looking at appointments today.
Today.
And there's nothing that says you have to reappoint people.
Okay, when you look at the eight that are on the sheet...
I had to run for reelection. I didn't automatically get that spot.
Okay. The eight that are on here, five of them are mandated. I had no choice in those. So you have three businesses on here that were reappointed.
Okay, of the three, help me, how many are, I already answered that they're all white, and you did not reach out to any of the, you maybe reached out to the Puerto Rican Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, potentially?
Yes.
Okay, but you did not reach out to any of the other ones, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, Madam Chair, I would move to, I would move to not accept the, at least three here that are not mandated until such a time that this board reaches out and at least, heck, I don't know. I asked a couple folks if they'd been asked, if anyone in their community wanted to serve, and they hadn't even been questioned. So I think it's not all that big, especially, I would have thought the dress down that I would have done would have elicited at least a letter, or an email, or something to try to increase participation. You could come up and say, "Hey, listen, John, I called, I sent emails, and I didn't get anything." And you know what? There wouldn't be a darn thing I can say, but the fact that you didn't send it in two years, you didn't send an email, you didn't make a phone call.
The vacancies, I thought it was where you wanted me to focus. I didn't realize you want me to deny reappointments and focus on minorities. I can do that, and I can also make you aware as we move forward, with that in that respect.
I'm sorry if I wasn't clear. There were white people, and you decided to choose those same white people over again. And you didn't even do the common courtesy of calling other, and I went as far as to delineate who they were, and you didn't do that. Am I disappointed? Absolutely. Am I going to win this? I have absolutely no idea, but I think you should be ashamed to get up here to say that you have not even contacted folks. And to get up here and say that racial diversity, that's how you open, is extremely important, and see a regression from three down to two, that it's gone backwards? I, listen, I don't, it's wonderful that you can defend that. I can't as a policymaker. So, Madam Chair, I would move to not accept the three appointments until such a time that we've given common courtesy to underrepresented minorities, the opportunity to serve on this board, whether they're reappointments or not.
Okay, and they have to be in our in-demand industries, and have over five employees, and also be a C-level person, you know, CEO, CFO, or COO. The hard part is to find those individuals in in-demand, in our in-demand industries, which is aerospace, aviation...
You didn't even ask. And if you would have said, "I called, and I asked these chambers of commerce," and you would have come up here and said, "Hey, listen, there, we checked, and there weren't any that met the federal requirements," I would have to sit here on my hands. But you didn't ask. You didn't simply pay the common courtesy to these folks and ask.
I didn't realize that you wanted me to deny reappointments. I was focused on vacancies. So I'm sorry that I misunderstood that.
Madam Chair, I...
I'm done.
I...
I have a question. As far as the mandated slots, are those mandated to a specific person or a specific industry?
Some of them are, the mandated slots are, some of them are very narrow, and some of them are a little bit, you have a little bit of leeway. Like, 20% of the board has to be labor unions and community-based organizations with no less than two labor unions. So when I reach out to the labor unions, they assign somebody. I don't have any say in that. Then you have the VR, that person that's a head of rehabilitation, and they're on our board. We have the superintendent of public schools, so if he's black, or white, or a woman...
But that would be, to me, a specific one. But as far as labor union representation, it wouldn't be difficult to say, you know, do you have some minority representation?
Yes, I can definitely...
Even though it's a mandated slot, you would have some leeway to ask, just so the board's properly represented by our community.
Yes, I can definitely ask that. The last time I filled those slots, it took two years to get them to put somebody on the board. But I can definitely do that. I can ask for reappointments of labor union seats, and ask if they can put a minority on there.
I think that's kind of where I was confused, on the mandated slots, because they're mandated with a specific, you know, industry or a specific, you know.
Yeah.
I think you could probably find, you know, some...
Yes, yes, you're right.
...representation within those mandated slots.
I can do that. I can ask.
Madam Chair, I don't think you have to ask the African-American Chamber of Commerce of Central Florida, "We'd like a minority candidate," or the Brevard Caribbean American Sports and Cultural Association, "We'd like a minority candidate." I think you need to ask. So if you want to increase it that other way, but, you know, more power to you, but at a minimum, just ask.
Okay, I got it. I'm clear now.
So if all of these are reappointments, and there actually may be more than three, I think you said, that were new slots, there may be more than three where you could make some changes. If, you know, if Commissioner Tobias is amicable, I would just say, rework the list, the whole list. And some of these may come back. Obviously, you know, we want to make sure that you've got some good people on here, definitely, that I'm sure bring value to your board, or that you may want to keep. But I think, you know, it'll give you the leeway to use some of those other slots if they're available for some different representation. At least that's what I'd like to see. Is that...
Fair.
Okay. Is that okay with you?
That's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
So do we need a motion on this? Attorney?
To reject.
Motion to reject, or motion to...
Was there a pending motion on all the appointments except three?
Yeah. Madam Chair, I'd like to pull my motion and modify it to reject the, all the appointments that were put forward, to such a time that we're provided with a new group of applicants.
Well, as long as there's, with the understanding that some of those people may be the same.
Absolutely. That is more reflective of the Brevard community.
You know what I mean? Like, it doesn't mean that none of those people can be on the list. It just means that we'd like to see a little more diversity possible.
Okay, okay.
All right. I have a motion by Commissioner Tobias.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right. Moving on to public comments. Katie Delaney. And after Katie, I believe this says Eddie, Cagiano, Eddie Cagiano. If you could just state your name for the record, please, when you come up?
Sure. My name is Katie Delaney. I live in Cocoa. So I came here today to speak on J2, but that was pulled for another meeting. I, I hope that this board, when the time comes, rescinds that vote, especially because some of you said that you would vote no, and you didn't. And that was, you know, pretty upsetting. I came here a few months ago and spoke to you about the school board and what's been happening there, how they've been treating the public, how they've been treating parents, how they've been wasting our money, how they have a $512 million debt looming over them. This has been decades of mismanagement of funds. They don't need a millage, they need an audit. And I, I'm, I'm just very upset because when I was here and spoke before you all, back in April, I was told, "Yes, I agree with you. Yes, my heart goes out to you. You know, we're not for this." And then I was shocked that this topic was put forward in a zoning meeting where no constituents knew about it. Nobody showed up. And I promise you, I had a room full of people that were going to come tonight. The public does not want this millage. People can barely afford to feed their families. People cannot afford this right now. We are, inflation is through the roof, and now we want to up our property taxes to give more money to a group of people who are mismanaging our funds and have been for decades. I hope that, I hope that you guys hear me and hear my heart in this, you know. And I hope that you guys vote no, whenever this, or, I'm sorry, vote yes to rescind the original vote, to get rid of this millage from the November ballot. And I encourage you to reach out to your constituents, because I can promise you, I have been speaking on this all over Brevard County, and people are not for this. They're not for it. this all over Brevard County, and people are not for this. They're not for it. And I hope that you guys do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Edie? And after Edie, Charles Tovey?
My name is Edie Cagiano. I live in the Grand Isle community in Viera. With me as well today are other Grand Isle residents and board members. I'm a vice president on our board. We have our property manager here. And Grand Isle is part of Veca, which has over 4,000 homes. And I'd like to speak about reclaimed water, on which Veca depends, and about which the Veca Board President contacted Commissioner Smith's office late last year. In about 2018, reclaimed availability issues began as Viera grew. That reclaimed water, that, we understand that it's not guaranteed, but limited and often no reclaimed water has significant negative impacts on community upkeep and owner and HOA landscaping monetary outlays. Despite carefully managing the reclaimed water it gets, Grand Isle is deeply affected financially and aesthetically by its dwindling availability, as new Viera development is hooked into that system. Ordinance number 89-30, amending Chapter 23 Code of Brevard County, states that reclaimed water is to be used on all real property located within areas of Brevard County, Florida, which have been designed as, as reuse districts. But that ordinance was written in June of 1989, when perhaps reclaimed water was plentiful. That is not the case now. I understand that wastewater from four homes is needed to irrigate one home. With continued use of water-efficient appliances, that ratio is expected to rise to six to one. So how can the reclaim department supply new communities? Where will the water come from? It's like advertising a restaurant opening, but then saying, who knows when, or even if food will be available. How can communities plan around this kind of service? Should they continue to waste potable water for irrigation, which was one of the first reasons given for this ordinance, which set up the reuse system to begin with? Section 23-149, paragraph four of the ordinance entitled "Right to Refuse Service" includes the following: "That the county shall have the right at all times to refuse to extend services, including when there is an inadequate supply of reclaimed water." We respectfully and urgently request that this refusal option be invoked, and the addition of new customers to reclaim service be suspended. This aligns with Section 23-149, 145 of that ordinance, which states that "The intent of this article includes to provide public facilities and utilities that will have a sufficient capability to support the service areas. Let the reclaim department do what it needs to, to catch up with its existing customers, ensuring that it has the appropriate resources to do so. And only then let them decide what needs to be done to allow, to allow them to take on more." Thank you.
Thank you.
Picture of my yard.
All right, can you give that to the clerk, please?
This is a lot of candy on it.
Okay. Mr. Tovey, and after Mr. Tovey, Rhonda Brought.
Charles Tovey, 2555 Roberts Road. Thank you. Hey, missed you guys. I did find my 92-page appeal brief, 90, 86 in black and white, and six in color. Wanted to avoid everything. And why am I up here? Because of my property value. 20 years ago, I moved up to Pineda and bought some property, and then Brevard County annexed, or gave away property to Palm Shores, and they annexed behind me and all surrounding areas. Anyways, how they did and what they did, I don't know yet. And I've been no trespass out of Palm Shores, and told that my public speaking was not recognized at their meetings. Anyways, my property value, I, I value at a million. Why? Because they can't build on the property behind me without my property. And it was, it's my understanding and my expression that the gravity line, they can't build on the gravity, on the property, because of the gravity line that was installed. They gave away the property for a dollar. Guy put in a gravity line, but now they need more property. So for 20 years, I, I thought it was only one person, but come to find out, it's everybody, and their brothers too, and sisters, and cousins, and, but they all want my property, because they can't develop on their property. So Brevard County's losing tax money on their commercial property, Palm Shores is losing their tax money, and the owner of the property can't do anything. So they've been trying to drive me out of my property for 20 years. And it wasn't until last year that I finally get some relief, when the last property owner left, or sold the property, whatever he did. And I've been steadily working night and day on my property. I have half of the materials for the roof, and the other half's coming this week and next week. I'm working on that, and I'm contacting the people around me to see if they're interested in negotiating some kind of terms. I don't want to do anything, because why, if they're just going to come and drive me off my property anyhow? When I went to court that time, it was for a failure to pay fine, my, the code enforcement fine. Come to find out, they made a mistake, and they dragged me to court and all this stuff, and I wasn't feeling good to begin with. I wasn't feeling good when they sentenced it either. But that was lack of merit, and they prejudiced me from bringing in my information to the courtroom at that time. Plus, the other reasons were all lack of merit as well. And I justified, and, thank you, more will be revealed.
Thank you, Mr. Tovey. Rhonda?
You want any water?
Thanks. And after Rhonda, Sandra Sullivan?
Yes, I just brought the pictures over there. Edie spoke to all of our interests there. Basically, we have no water supply on a continuing basis, and yet we are charged for water supply on a continuing basis. The water supply is not sufficient to keep the grass growing, as you see by the pictures that I passed out. I have brown grass about, about four months of the year, and it is right now. And that's the pictures I took in the past couple of days. And it isn't just me, it's most of the people in our community. So we live in a very nice community. It's a beautiful community. It's a very close, intimate community. And yet, you'd be afraid to check your relatives in it, you know, about a third of the year. You wouldn't want your relatives to come visit you. So I, I'd like to see if we can do something about the water supply, and I don't know what is being done, and I'd like to be educated about what's being done about the water supply. It seems to get less every year, instead of more every year.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Sandra Sullivan?
First meeting back, welcome. Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. So, the, and I'm a little bit disappointed to see the, some of the things put off, but I understand why things, with one commissioner missing. Regarding the, the school millage increase, I'm very pleased to see this being considered to rescind it. I, myself, pulled my kids from the school for a number of years because of what I felt was an issue with servicing our kids. I was at meetings last year with a number of those issues with not fulfilling the stakeholders' needs, shall we say, and the disrespect that drove off. I spoke on public record and said that I'm very concerned about the fiscal impact of the actions that were taken. The bigger picture that I see in Brevard County is the concern to how our locals are going to handle all these increases. You have the school board wanting a millage increase, and my understanding is the county commission also wants to put to referendum, to put, to do away with the charter cap. And then we have another issue, which I think is sort of related to the last issue, in terms that it requires a supermajority vote of the commission. So to put that charter cap on, you need a supermajority. And my concern is that there will be a difference in legal opinion coming. So I just want to say into the record what the legal opinion that was stated on May 5. The one provision, so, in response to being asked of the attorney what a, what a supermajority was, she answered, the one provision I am thinking of is the charter cap. It says, supermajority of the board. I think a reasonable interpretation is to start with the definition of what the board is. It's a five-member board. Even with a vacancy, at that point, it does not change, that is, the composition of five members. So a supermajority would still be four. My concern is that this legal opinion was stated on public record, and I hope that you will respect that when it comes time to take a vote for the charter cap. And as well as on the very controversial Driftwood, which I understand may also need a supermajority vote, the public does not want to see $30 million of, of bed tax money that is a change in bed use, a bed tax, and which is why it may require a supermajority vote. And the public does not want to see a single developer that is developing a business center that is to the correct size for that size facility. If we're looking at a convention center, then we should look at that. Thank you.
Dontavia Smith?
Good evening, Dontavia Smith, Cocoa, Florida. Last week, came, I discussed my proposal that I had sent when I was in Brazil, as far as the homelessness and affordable housing issue, that's a crisis in Brevard County. I was a little pissed, and I was pissed to the highest of pissedivity. Because, I mean, the hard work I put into actually caring for constituent, not even constituents, Brevard County residents, that aren't so fortunate to have, or have a place to stay. So I'm not solely mad at you guys for not recognizing the proposal, because you guys weren't the only staff that I sent the proposal to. Also sent to multiple municipal leaderships within District Two, District One, Two and Three, Four and Four. So it's not solely upon you guys to recognize this proposal, because you guys aren't the sole leadership in Brevard County. The municipal leadership has this proposal as well. I want residents and constituents to know that the proposal that I submitted, it is not a handout proposal. This is not to hand out food, housing, free transportation, free education to, to residents or constituents who don't want to work, or who don't want to go to school to sustain, to earn sustainable livelihood. You have to work or go to school. This is, this is not, this is a leg up. So that's why I entitled the proposal, "Operation Leg Up Brevard," because this is, this is a leg up more than the handout. Understanding from my perspective, coming from college, I didn't have anything. My parents, my grandmother and mother worked very hard to make sure I had, but we didn't have much. So coming home from college, being on food stamps, running for mayor, I had nothing, but my drive to, to, to focus on my community. Yet, at the same time, coming out of college, I had student loans. Coming out of college, I couldn't get a job, because I was denied multiple job opportunities. This proposal allows students, disabled veterans, veterans period, families who are left, lost homes or lost jobs, a leg up. This is not giving them a handout to say, here you go, this is what we're going to give you for the position you're in, because everyone's situation aren't their own faults. So this is, this is a project or, and a program that you have to fit the criteria to work, to, to be a part of. If you don't want to work, if you don't want to, you want a handout, this program is not for you. Not to say that I'm not going to give someone $2 and $3 when I see them asking for a couple dollars. That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, this program is to help families and those coming to Brevard earn and sustain a living, a living that Brevard County constituents should have. So I'm going to give this proposal to the clerk, just to make sure it's on file as a public record. And thank you for your time again, Commissioner. And, yeah, you're running with the mayor. Bye-bye.
Thank you. All right, that's all the public comment cards I have. So we'll move on to item H2.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Item H2 is the approval of the amendment, amendment to the North Merritt Island Wastewater Transmission System Number One, Ordinance 88-48.
All right. I don't have any cards on it. Commissioner, what's your desire?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Tobias. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Got off easy this time, Eddie. All right. Item H3, I have 15 public comment cards. I want everybody to have the opportunity to speak, of course. Commissioner, do you want to, I don't want to cut anybody's time, so I'll respectfully allow you three minutes, but I would ask that you try to keep it closer to two, so everybody gets a chance to be heard, and no one has to leave, if that's okay? Again, you have your full three minutes, you're entitled to your full three minutes, but just be respectful of each other's time. We've done many meetings that last into six, eight hours. We don't mind being here, but there's a lot of people here, I'm sure, that want to not be here all night. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And when I see that many cards, and we've sometimes had 30 cards and 40 cards, a lot of people have basically the same thing to say as the person before them. And sometimes you'll hear somebody say the exact same thing you wanted to say. And sometimes folks feel very intimidated in coming up here. So what I'm going to say is, you don't have to come up if your name is called. And if somebody else has already said basically what you want to say, you can just say, I'm against this, or I'm for it, or I think the third person said exactly what I wanted to say. So that would allow you not to have to come up here, and it would also save some time, if you want.
All right. I would like staff to introduce this item, if you could, and talk about what this is and what this isn't, because I know our office received quite a few emails mad that they thought waste management was getting more money, and that's not the case. So whether you agree with it or not is one thing, I just want to make sure that you've got the correct information before you come up and speak.
Oh, thank you.
For yours.
Good evening, Madam Chair. I guess I can start with the clarification to the board and to the public, that the annual non-ad valorem solid waste disposal assessments are utilized to fund solid waste disposal system of Brevard County. This does not affect solid waste collection, and all annual non-ad valorem solid waste collection assessments fund only the collection of trash, recycling, and vegetative waste in unincorporated Brevard County, under a contract currently held by Waste Management. No funding from collection assessments is used for county personnel, equipment, materials, or other operating needs for solid waste disposal. Likewise, no solid waste disposal revenues are expended on collection efforts. These are two separate issues. And as previously presented to the board on April 19 of this year, Solid Waste Management Department this evening is requesting the board of county commissioners to consider and authorize an increase in the annual non-ad valorem solid waste disposal assessments for improved properties, both residential and commercial. The increases are necessary to support solid waste disposal operations and ensure solid waste disposal capacity in Brevard County. This includes construction of additional Class 1 landfill cells at the central disposal facility in Cocoa, expansion of the processing pad, and construction of a replacement transfer station at the Mockingbird Way mulching facility in Titusville, the construction of a Class 3 landfill facility to replace the Sarno Road landfill in Melbourne, and expansions of the landfill gas collection system at the central disposal facility to maintain regulatory compliance. These projects and anticipated costs were presented at the February 2022 budget workshop, as well as at the April 19 board meeting. An engineering study to support the most effective financing of these projects, as authorized by the board during regular session in April, is currently underway, and further updating the costs for the five-year capital improvement program for the solid waste disposal infrastructure. Implementation of these projects will ensure solid waste disposal capacity in Brevard County far into the future. All the details are as presented in the agenda report and attachments, and I will answer any questions.
And I probably should have asked you before the meeting, but do we have, like, we discussed a chart to show the average cost per household. I know it may be part of the agenda package, but do we have something we can present?
It is in, in part of the agenda.
Yeah. And I appreciate the explanation, but sometimes it's easier to see what it means for each household. Because I know the majority, like I said, the majority of our emails our office received, and we tried to respond to each and every one, was that they thought that waste management was getting the funds. Thank you. Sorry, I should have asked beforehand. Not everybody enjoys going through our rather long agenda. Not everybody enjoys going through our rather long agenda. Sorry. If you could just very quickly explain to the benefit of the public that are here that, and that are watching, I guess, what we're looking at?
The, um, the current assessment for a residential billing unit is $57 per year, and a commercial billing unit is $164.51. What we're proposing in the fiscal year 2023 is to raise that for a residential, a residential billing unit to $62.13, and for a commercial billing unit, $179.32. And then, in fiscal year 2024, to $68.48 for a residential billing unit, $191.57 for a commercial billing unit. And then in 2025, to 60, is that 68.80 or 69? 69.80 for a residential billing unit, and 201.46 for each commercial billing unit.
So, the average cost or the average increase per household per year?
It starts at about $5, then it goes down to, it's $5.13 in 2023. It's about $4.46 in 2024. It's $3.45.
And that's annual, correct?
Annually, yes.
$5.13 annually for the average home?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I just wanted everybody to have that information.
This is an annual disposal assessment. This is a one, one-time cost per year. If you see something monthly, that may be that you live in a municipality and you're looking at your collection assessments from the municipality, not from Brevard County. We do not, we do not charge the residents of Brevard County on a monthly basis.
Commissioner Tabia?
Or, or, or the Florida Today reported that this was a, a, a monthly increase. So, to be very, to be very clear, we understand where you're coming from. If you want to deal with it on a monthly basis, by all mean, we'll take the $5 and change and divide, divided by 12, and we'll discuss that as a, as a monthly increase of 50 cents. But, but to be, to be clear, I understand, you know, we'll discuss it. You'll have the opportunity. But to be clear, the Florida Today did a horrible job of reporting when they said that this was a increase of $5 a month. And I'm not excusing $5 for a year, but that's what this counts to, $5 a year. I'm sorry for the poor reporting of the Florida Today. And I hope that that wasn't your only impetus for coming up here, because we would be, I don't think any of us would, that's not even a starter. But let's at least be on the same numbers. Again, this is $5 and change a year. So, you know, 40-some cents or 50-some cents per, per month, if you want to do it on the monthly basis.
And, and again, that's the only reason why I wanted at least some context and some explanation. And this isn't the first time that this is, we've kind of gotten some misinformation by the newspaper. And I, I won't apologize for them because I don't work for Florida Today, but... All right, so let's start going through the cards. We will not answer questions back and forth. Otherwise, you know, people will have to wait even longer. But we're happy to discuss it again, of course, once everybody's had a chance to speak. Mark? Okay.
He explained to me, now you've let me know that it's not going to Waste Management.
Thank you.
I don't want it going that way.
All right, Mike Blakenhagen? Okay. Thank you, Jim. Mike Blakenhagen? Did I say that right? 2256 Woodbury? If I said your name wrong? No, Mike? Okay. Ron Goran? I'll circle back around to that other card at the end, in case I...
Ron Goran, I live in Palm Bay. For about the first 10 or 12 years that I lived in Palm Bay, the trash collection was, uh, once a week. And then when you had the new contract, the hauler was coming, is coming to pick up trash twice a week. And I'd like to understand what was the necessity to increase the trash pickup from once a week to twice a week?
That was Palm Bay's decision. That has nothing to do with the county.
Has nothing to do with the county?
That's the city of Palm Bay that changed their contract with Waste Management or Waste Pro or whoever they use.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. I just said I wasn't going to do that, but I wanted to have the information. All right, Richard Bass? Did I say that correctly?
Yes, ma'am. Richard Bass, West Melbourne. Um, I was just wondering if any of you all had special interest in Waste Management, whether directly or indirectly? No. I think it is irresponsible for you all to pass this with the state of our nation. Thank you.
And again, this isn't going to Waste Management. Dennis Horner?
Dennis Horner, 840 Hawks Ridge Court, Northeast Palm Bay. I want to clarify something. This is totally confusing. I didn't mean to read the newspaper article, but this is totally confusing because nowhere in here does it talk about who we're under, which is Republic. So, my understanding now is that this is strictly nothing to do with trash collection at all, even though it's mentioned in here. Why is it mentioned in here if it has nothing to do with it? In the letter that was sent to us. And, you know, it talks about solid waste disposal.
Solid waste disposal is where the waste is disposed. So, that would be your landfill. Yeah, it would be, it's not trash, trash collection.
Okay, somewhere in here it talks about collection. All right. And the other confusing thing was that since Republic wasn't mentioned in here, I didn't know if it was covering Republic. I had a few things to say about them. Their CEO made $14 billion last year.
Yeah, this has nothing to do with Republic.
Okay.
Nicola Ogunclaire? Sorry if I butchered that name. Thank you. Barbara Wong?
Good evening, Commissioners. I think the other gentleman before me was correct in saying that the notice wasn't clear. I realize that, you know, there are some statutory requirements in what was sent out. But most people, including myself, I could have gotten up and said I didn't want to speak. But the reason I got up was because I sent a letter on the 18th. And I guess my interpretation of the assessment was incorrect. But at least I would have expected a response. Never got it. And so, had I gotten a response, I wouldn't be here this evening.
Did you send it by mail or by email?
Yes, by mail, June 18th, right? And never got a response. And it was sent to the address on the notice as stated that we need to write within 20 days? Yeah. And never got a response. So, um, I don't know why. Was sent to Brevard County Board of Commissioners, Solid Waste Management Department, 2725, Judge Fran Jameson Way, A118, Vera, Florida, 32940. Never got a response.
Could you repeat the address?
Brevard County Board of County Commissioners.
Your address, where the, where the letter was?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Barbara Wong, of course, he said it. 2870 Camberly Circle. I live in Vera, which is unincorporated Brevard.
Yeah.
I'm in your district, Mr. Smith. Yeah.
I apologize if, if we did not respond to that. We did not see a letter from, from your address.
I guess blame it on the post office, I guess. I don't know, but the very day I got this, I wrote the letter. And that would have solved my question.
We apologize for any confusion.
We definitely tried to get back with people as quick as we could, so...
Yeah, I know, when I send emails, I do, but, you know, I had several questions. And of course, related to Waste Management.
Well, if you still have questions, call my office.
Okay.
Then you don't have to write. Just pick up the phone and call my office.
Okay. I'll do that next time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Barbara. All right, Roman Scharf? Hi, Roman.
My name is Roman Scharf. I want to apologize to Kurt. I sent you a very sarcastic letter. But I think there's a couple of points I'd like to emphasize. We're looking at a temporary tax that's going to be codified to be perpetual. I have a problem with that. I hope the Commission thinks about it. We all know about, uh, temporary taxes. And Ronald Reagan pointed out that throughout history, every temporary tax has been permanent, pretty much. You could look at temporary tax for gas from 1932, telephone tax from 1898, tire tax that was supposed to be gone in 1936. I would hope that we don't make a practice of codifying automatic tax increases without questioning and saying, "Hey, there's an impact on our people. We look to you to protect us, to keep our millage down. I heard from other speakers that we're concerned. We can't afford food. We can't afford gas." Any increase that comes across, think about those folks that express the concern. I want to thank you very much.
Thank you. Bill Whitman? Luella Edwards?
Good evening. My name is Luella. I live in Cocoa and the Broadmoor area. I keep hearing everybody say it's not going to solid waste. So, where is it going? I myself, I'm a widow, okay? Everything else is already going up. Gas, food, stuff like that. All of us don't get food stamps. I live off one check, a survivor's disability. They have already decreased that $200. Now, $5 might not seem much to you or the next person, but it means a lot to me because every dollar I get, I need it, you know? And the purpose of it, you say it's not going to solid waste. Where is it going? We're not getting nothing additional. And the reason why I'm speaking on this so passionately, the area I'm in, like, um, drain storm. I've been paying for that ever since 1988, and we don't have not one drain storm. I go to meetings after meetings, and they say, "Oh, we're going to find a way to reimburse it." But they never do. But when they want to bring in new stuff, they find a way to take it from us. You know, thank y'all for your time. I appreciate it. I hope you're taking it into consideration.
TD Buckingham? Or TJ Buckingham? Mr. Buckingham may have left. Okay. Gary Glover?
President Palm Bay. My concern is the CPI that you chose to use. It would have been better for the announcement to show the development that you were doing, instead of get the enhancements that you're doing for the solid waste. That would have explained it a little bit better than just hit the tax increase. Because over the next three years, we're going to be hit with a 20 and 1/2% increase over those three years. When I worked as a cost analyst on a lot of government projects, and we used the CPIs only because we didn't have actual costs. With the actual costs that you have, I'm almost surprised that you didn't use your own CPI, because using an average for the US cities, as soon as you use that, now there's no lower average. It's just going to continue to grow. Because an average, as you know, instead of get T's lowest and the highest, and we get the average. But if you use that average on the US cities as your choice, now, it just continues to rise. So, I'm just a little concerned using the average CPI for those US cities versus using the actual cost. Because if you have the proposals, there's no reason why you can't back that back into the county and say, "Okay, here's what everybody, for the business owners and residents, is going to be their share," instead of having it just based upon a CPI for the US cities. That's it.
Thank you. Sandra Sullivan?
Sandra Sullivan? Haven't attended a lot of meetings, most commission meetings, for the last four years. I haven't seen any topic discussed more than running out of space at Sarno. And what is not being told here today is that we, as a county, our decision-makers, waited until Sarno was pretty much out of space. So, in May of last year, May of 2021, this commission voted to start building the 192 facility, which will not be ready until 2026 to take garbage. In the meantime, we ran out of space at Sarno. In the October meeting, you voted to buy trucks and pay for services at that meeting and a subsequent meeting. One of the county commissioners said, "I'm not going to vote for this until I know who's going to pay for it." Well, who's going to pay for it? We're trucking trash for five years because this commission did crisis management and not proactive management to make decisions in a timely way. Now, if we have a hurricane hit and we have a lot more trash like we did after Irma, who's going to pay for that? And so, maybe what we should be doing is doing some proactive management after the fact. Perhaps we should consider even using some of the military technology that they developed for incineration. You have the land. I looked at, I looked at the property up by Sarno, you know? So, why not look into some other alternatives? Some of the alternatives that you talked about on the DIA saying, "We really don't want to build another dump. Let's look at some alternatives." So, maybe it's time to look at those, some of those alternatives for the next five years that we're trucking trash to other facilities for trucks that you bought and services you bought to alleviate some of that cost. Because what I read in the budget report is the cost of the new facilities being funded by bonds. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Durstein? Bob Durstein? All right, Elaine Burr?
Hi. Good evening and thanks. I have a quick question. I'd like some clarification. On the letter that was sent out, it states in the last paragraph that the, uh, assessment will begin in the fiscal year October 2022. And for each year after that through '24, '25, the rate will decrease by CPI and GIT until such time that further action is considered by the Board of County Commissioners. Is there no limit? Does it just keep compounding every year? Do we not have, you know, an increase for a finite time? Or is it an open-ended and it can continue increasing every year? That's my question, and I would like clarification. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to explain it? I mean, I know the answer, but you can probably explain it more eloquently than me.
The solid waste disposal assessments are, are brought up in our rate resolutions in front of the Board every year, and that gives you an opportunity to reject them and, and, uh, basically put a halt to any further increases according to the CPI.
Yeah, so in other words, that with any increase, it has to come back to the Board. So, they're just notifying you that, you know, pending action of the Board of County Commissioners, this is what we have so far. So, those numbers can change year to year. I mean, but honestly, you, again, have that opportunity to address the Board. We'll have public meetings and all that stuff, but... All right, that's all the cards I have, because I think that clarity probably helped a lot of people, you know, with their understanding, better understanding of what they received. And I guess my only suggestion would be, and I know there's a lot in the notice because a lot of, there is a lot of legalese that's required, but perhaps we put a more clear explanation, you know, with these kinds of notices to let people know this is, you know, this is not a Waste Management increase. This is exactly what it is. Because in our efforts to over-explain things, sometimes we can really muddy them up and confuse people, especially because this is our world and this isn't everybody else's. So, while we may, we have a better understanding, obviously, of what it means, it can be very confusing to anybody who doesn't live within this world. So, that would be my only recommendation moving forward. Come on up. You guys don't mind if he comes up, speak his piece?
I appreciate it.
I would just recommend, next time, get it before we bring it back to the Board.
Where does it come from?
Because you're making us break the rules. That's okay. I'm just teasing you, giving you a hard time.
For the same reason, Commissioner Smith had commented, you know, we get repeats, and I figured my bases would be covered, but I'd like to-
Okay.
-give you just a little bit of input on this. My name is Steve Dowell. I'm at 1414 Main Street in Palm Bay, and I'd like to make these comments regarding this solid waste disposal assessment. I think the notification letter that went out needs some clarification, too, because you can tell people are confused. I would like to understand, and I think everybody else would, and they've co-mingled the local waste management with what this has to do with. And I think there are other things in that particular notification that went out that need clarification. I would like to get on board with the needs of the county, whatever they may be in terms of capacity for solid waste disposal, but I don't feel that the notification letter was enough to grasp what you're really doing and the importance of it. I think there are other factors that we, as a people in Brevard County, need to understand that will help us side and go forward with what the proposal is, or other alternatives that might be at hand that we, uh, might come up just by suggestion alone. But there are things like, uh, what is the Brevard city's or county's current disposal capacity? The basics of this, I don't yet understand, and I went looking on the internet, trying to find what I needed to know, so I could side with the need and the taxes for that period of time, but I haven't been able to, uh, get a hold of those yet, and I'm wondering if there's someplace we can go. I think everybody in this notification letter would have benefited if there was, for more information, go see this website, or go do this, uh, to get, gather that additional information that would help us make the right decision. And I'm, I'm wondering how you know what the additional capacity is? Uh, how do you even know what that is for the next so many years? You had an engineering group you referred to that has been tasked with costing, I believe it is, what this will be? I would sure like to understand what those alternatives are and what the actual capacities that need to be fulfilled for the next number of years are. Uh, that would help me, again, side with what the decision needs to be going forward for the county at whole. What is, um, what specifically is this capacity that's being maintained? Where is it at right now? And I never understood the improved property concept, and I don't have a definition of that yet, but I could sure use help with getting a hold of that, and I, because I don't get it, I'm sure there's a lot of other people who don't know exactly what you mean by that. So, um, the other potential alternatives, we heard about this, and others who spoke about that, always when you want to raise taxes or you want to increase budgets-
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. Commission? All right, I need some action.
Madam Chair.
Yes?
Um, I've, I've supported this in the past, moving forward. So, what was, what was mentioned, most of that stuff was mandated by state statute, to be very clear, it was complicated, there were some really large numbers in there. I totally get it, I know it was complicated, because my parents got a copy of it and they asked me, you know, what the heck is this? And, um, so, I apologize, we probably, I don't know what state statute says, but we probably, you're right, need to have some sort of addition there, I don't know what the additional cost would be to put in a, a second piece of paper, but I appreciate everyone that, that showed, that showed up, because whether it is a five dollar a month, which it is not, or a 43 cent per month increase, which it is, it's very important that you guys show up and, and voice your opinion. I understand folks disdain for, uh, waste management, um, and, and they got mixed up in this, in this, in this whole thing. What's happened here is, was impacted the county the same way that it has impacted private business. We had a $20 million increase in building this solid waste facility, not in the last 20 years, but in about the last 20 months. We saw this solid waste facility, we saw a bid at $55 million, and now, last time I checked, it was $75 million. And I really hope we locked it in at that price, because I have no idea what it would be right now. So, um, I wish we would have done this before, uh, but that ship has passed, there, there, we can't look, we have to move forward, uh, and we have a choice. And that choice, and we went over this basically last time, is, do we institute these rate increases, which, 513 the first year, 435 the second, and 332, and then, then CPI, or we start taking the solid waste and trucking it to a private facility in which, instead of a 43 cent increase, you would see one of 10 to 15 times that magnitude. I think we got a disposal annual cost at JED landfill at more than $90 million. It's private, so they would have the ability to control all costs. Again, I wish we had the hindsight, uh, to, to move backwards, so we weren't facing this increase, uh, of, of what amounts to 43 cents. I'm not going to belittle anyone by saying, hey, listen, this is a can of Coke, because first of all, a can of Coke costs more than 43 cents now. Uh, but, but, um, I, I, I'm, I'm put in a position where I don't like it, but the alternative is worse. And, and so, I, I'm gonna, this, this, this pains me, but I, I'm gonna make a motion to, uh, accept the, uh, I didn't even have the motion down, because I was not expecting to put this forward, but I made the motion in the past, um, uh, to move forward, it didn't go. Hopefully, this one does, because the alternative is far worse. So, motion to accept, uh, the solid waste increase, Madam Chair.
Have a motion by Commissioner Tobias?
Second, I have, like to make a comment, too.
Taken by Commissioner Smith?
I just wanted to piggyback on Commissioner Tobias's point, and I think he was underestimating the cost, uh, and you folks can appreciate that if we don't have our own landfill and we have to take it to another county, you can understand that, one, it doesn't get to the other county unless we truck it, and you can imagine what it would cost to truck hundreds and hundreds of thousands of pounds of waste. We're not just talking about a local landfill, we're talking about another county. So, you know, that's one huge expense that would be far greater than five dollars, you might be looking at $500 a month. That's how crazy that would be. The other issue would be, we're at the mercy of the other commercial landfill, because if they're the only game in town, they can charge whatever they want, so they can just ring us up, and we have no option. So, we took the step to fully implement the current landfill that we're working on, and we will hopefully get it open in the next three to five years, and keep your costs reasonable. And so, that's, that's our aim, that's what we're hoping to do, and we have your, your pocketbooks in mind, because we pay these fees, too. So, that's what I just wanted to say, but that's why I seconded this.
All right. Commissioner Pritchett?
Yes, ma'am, I'm good.
Okay. All right, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right. Items J were continued to the next meeting. Item K, I have no public comment cards for item K, so moving on to board reports. Mr. Robate?
I have no report.
Kristen? Don't make me say your last name.
I have no report.
Okay. Commissioner Pritchett?
No report.
Commissioner Tobias?
No report, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to touch base on the issue of the school board and the school board's desire to put a referendum on this year's ballot. I believe people have a right to vote. I believe people have a right to an opinion, and if you, and as all the people that stood up here this evening, believe that the school board should not get one more penny, well then, you need to make sure that you and all your friends go and vote. If this does appear on the ballot, it's your responsibility and God-given right to vote against it, and that's what I would suggest that you do. So, if the Board of County Commissioners does decide to allow this on the ballot, we will be giving you the opportunity to exercise that right to vote, and vote it down. That's the simple answer. Just make sure everybody's as ticked off as you are, and get them to vote. No excuses. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, that's it. And I have no report, other than to say congratulations to my son, who promoted as an NCO. July 1st, but we got the opportunity to go see him, promoted at ceremony, so I like to publicly recognize my kids when they do things they work very hard to achieve, so congratulations, son, mom's proud of you, and so is the rest of the family. And with that, and so is the rest of the board. All right, thank you. Meeting adjourned.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program's sponsor, and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program's sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.